To the flag of the United States of America. Consider Republic where which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to thank everybody for coming tonight to the Edinburgh Town Council meeting, Monday, May 12, 2025. There will be row call. Rhonda? Here. Mr. Bryant?
Here.
Mr. Piercefield is not here. Ms. Wurts is not here. Ms. Sweet?
Yes.
And we have Edinburgh Town Attorney Dustin Huddleston and Edinburgh Town Manager John Myers and Ms. Spence. We'll go ahead and get started with the minutes of the council meeting.
I know there was one correction. That in the amount of, it should be 4,178.94 instead of 44,178.94.
That correction was actually on the April 14.
On the April 14th?
Yeah.
So do we need a motion for Rhonda to just those minutes?
Because I found a type of grant on the April 14th, so they need to approve the April 28th and then approve?
They do.
Okay.
So in front of the April, so next meeting just put on the legitimate correction of April 14.
Okay. It needs to be on the legitimate?
Yep. We'll do that in the next meeting. This one?
Just?
We'll do just April 14.
Okay.
Make a motion that we approve April 28, town board meeting minutes.
Thank you.
All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Next, Rhonda, we'll go through the claims.
Okay. In your packet, you received a copy of the claim docket for the end of month, March, in the amount of $161,140.57 and a claim docket for tonight, May 12, in the amount of $344,513.51. All claims have been reviewed and signed. I did have an additional claim come in this morning that is not on the docket. It's for Finstricaret Timbergate. It's a 50% deposit in the amount of $9,750.
Okay.
We need approval for both dockets and the additional for that Timbergate.
I have no questions. I'd like to make a motion to approve both buckets. Can I do them together?
Please.
And the additional invoice.
Four.
Four, I'm sorry.
Right there it is. Right there.
For $9,750.
Thank you.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. Anybody oppose?
I think I'll say all those in favor.
All those in favor? Say aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have the Resolution 2025-5 determining certain property worthless surplus property. Dustin Huddleston.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. We have, these are involved in two police vehicles that Little requested last meeting. This resolution deems them surplus and has donated them to the town of Cartridge as is where it is. There's no warranty or representation of these.
Oh, wow. We've discussed that last meeting.
I make a motion to throw Resolution 2025-5 determining certain property worthless surplus property.
Thank you.
All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, say no. Motion carries. Next, we have the 2017 Dodge Charger bill of sale. Mr. Huddleston?
Thank you. This is the next item to correspond with the resolution you just passed. So this is the sale that effectuates the transfer title and again shows its as is where it is transferred to town Cartridge. This is for the 2017 Dodge Charger.
Dustin, on that, there was only one signature line.
That's correct.
You need to sign that?
They can authorize anyone to sign it. Town manager, councilman.
So you need a motion?
Yeah, first is to approve the bill of sale, then they do a second motion to be signed.
Okay. So we need two motions, 17 and 18?
Correct.
Okay.
We'll take 17.
2017 Dodge Charger bill of sale, make a motion.
Make a motion to approve the bill of sale for the 2017 Dodge Charger.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Okay, and then you need a motion for, we can have John to sign.
I'll make a motion for town manager, John Myers, to sign the bill of sale.
All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, say no. And then you need a motion for the 2018 Dodge Charger bill of sale.
I make a motion to approve the bill of sale for the 2018 Dodge Charger.
All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, say no. Motion carries. Then you need a motion for the signature.
Do you have a second?
All those in favor. Yeah, we do.
Okay. Make a motion to let John Meyer, town manager, sign the bill of sale.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Okay, motion carries.
That's right.
Next, we have the Ball Diamond Rental Discussion. Mr. Piercefield scored just said that, so we will, do we have to have a motion to table that?
Yes.
I could say we just make a motion to table that to the next meeting since we don't have approved council here.
I make a motion to table the Ball Diamond Rental Discussion till next meeting.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, say no. Take that to the next meeting. We have the ERA 2024 Annual Report.
Okay. In your packet, you received a copy of the 2024 ERA Annual Report. How do they approve that at their meeting this evening? And according to IC code, after it's approved, it needs to be presented to the council. I don't, no action is needed, it just needs to be, is that correct? Just to be acknowledged in the minute.
Okay. So let me ask. And then next, we have the Inside Pay Contracting Pay Application Number Three.
Thank you. This is for the sewer lining that was done, started back late last year. They completed all the tests to come back for the linings that was passed. This is their final bill. What is that?
111.
111, 133.50 for the 190.
190, sorry.
197.87.
Yes. That'll be the last payment, the 190, 713, and 87 cents. The wastewater department did some of the repairs in-house, saving the town approximately a $111,133. We just needed to get this approved and signed by the council president.
Okay, I make a motion to approve the Inside Pay Contracting Pay Application Number Three, $190,713.87.
All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, say no. So the motion carries for Inside Pay Contracting Application.
Make a motion for Ryan Piercefield, President, to sign the invoice.
All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, say no. Motion carries. Street Superintendent Position Discussion, John, Mr. Myers?
Thank you. Happy to announce that the street department has a full crew except the street superintendent. Seems to be working very well, the crew that has been hired. Bill Jones and Sean back there and I, and there should be some people, and we think we got some good candidates. Rhonda and I have attended some webinars on the SBA1 and the financial impact that's going to have on the town. Around to look at some deep cuts, approximately 230-some thousand, which comes out of the cemetery, park and rec, police, fire, and street utilities, they're self-funding. So looking at that and doing those webinars, Bill Jones has been filling in, doing a lot, helping out. Actually, he's been like the interim superintendent with the rundown of the SBA1 and everything. I would like to leave him in there until the end of the year, so we get through budget. See them figure out where we're cutting at. And Bill has agreed to continue to serve in that capacity.
I think because we don't have a full council, we should table this for the next meeting. I'd really rather have a discussion with a full council.
Okay. I just want to bring out for discussion, how your guys' thoughts on it.
Okay. So we'll just table that for the next meeting.
I make a motion that we table the Endot State Road, oh, no, Street Superintendent Position Discussion till next meeting.
All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, say no. Okay, motion carries. Endot State Road 252, road detour enclosure, Mr. Rose?
So with the bridge they just closed on 252 between Lynn Drive and Channel 6565, in October of last year, the Endot sent over an email warning of detour, unofficial detour for local residents. And somehow it kind of slipped through the cracks. So the last couple of weeks, they called and need this contract. So last week, they got with me and Sean and came up with a route, which is through the golf course to Lynn Drive for local traffic only. And so then Endot sent over a contract to be signed that says pretty much that they're going to look at the road and if there's any issues after the traffic is over, they'll take care of the repairs. We just got to do paperwork and file it if it's necessary. I sent it to Dustin, he's approved it. He suggested I send it to Crossroads since they're the ones that are going to be doing inspections at Crossroads and sending their bill with it. So it just needs to be signed. So I need a motion to get, to approve it. And then it has me down as interim superintendent to sign it, so I don't want, if I want, they've got my name on the line, if they want me to sign or if you want me to have John sign. So I just need, we're just trying to do that.
It doesn't matter. Either one. Just have a motion to do it. First, do approve it, then authorize someone to sign.
I make a motion that we approve the Endot State Road 252 road detour enclosure.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, say no. And then I would say maybe you just have to.
Make a motion that Bill Jones, interim street superintendent, sign the invoice.
All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, say no.
Thank you.
Okay. Request for new fund in our plaza project.
Hi, good evening, council. So our plaza project downtown, we will have our first design for that by June 30th. And we'll have two designs that we'll get to choose from, and we'll have until July 7th to make that decision. But in the meantime, there's several grants and other funding opportunities that are available for us to start applying for, which I've been actively doing. So after talking to Rhonda, it seemed like the easiest way for us to start accepting funds and then being able to disperse those funds as the design is done and we start to get bids for different elements of the plaza, it seemed like just creating an NRO was probably the easiest way so that things aren't going into the general budget to get lost in there. So I'm asking tonight for approval of a resolution for the next council meeting to get approved to create an NRO fund, which is similar to what we have for the Irwin Park and the community center.
Do they have any questions? We've done that before with other funds.
Yeah, we have Dustin.
I authorize Dustin to come up with the, with the NRO Plaza Project fund.
All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, say no. Okay. Next is the Annual CF-1 Review for Socoma.
Thank you. So there are actually six abatements on here for Socoma, so I don't know if we need six motions or one motion, Dustin, on that one.
Your point.
Okay. Thought I would ask. So the first one is for personal property. This is Resolution 2015-6, and it's year 10 of 10, and recommend the approval on that one.
I make a motion to approve Resolution 2015-06 for Socoma Specialty Products.
All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Next is 2016-6. This is also personal property. This is year 8 of 10, and recommend the approval.
I make a motion to approve Resolution 2015-06 for Socoma Specialty Products.
All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Next is 2016-6. This is also personal property. This is year 8 of 10, and recommend the approval.
I make a motion to approve Resolution Number 2016-06 for Socoma Specialty Products.
All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, say no.
Next is Resolution 2016-07. This is for real property. This is year 9 of 10, and I'm recommending approval.
I make a motion to approve Resolution Number 2016-07 for Socoma Specialty Products.
All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, say no.
And we have 2017-04. This is for personal property. This is year 8 of 10, and I recommend the approval.
I make a motion to approve Resolution Number 2017-04 for Socoma Specialty Products.
All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, say no.
We have Resolution 2021-15. This is also for personal property. This is year 4 of 10, and I recommend the approval.
I make a motion to approve Resolution 2021-15 for Socoma Specialty Products.
All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, say no.
And we have Resolution 2023-4, also for personal property, year 2 of 10, and I recommend the approval.
I make a motion to approve Resolution 2023-4 for Socoma Specialty Products.
All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, say no.
Thank you. That's all.
Is that it? Thank you, Julie. Next, we have, Julie might not be there, permit inspection and code enforcement software quotes?
Yes. If you'll recall, during the budget process, I asked for $15,000 to be included in the budget for permitting software. And so Rhonda and Robert and I have developed a few software products. And so what you see tonight are three different quotes for year one plus installation. The first two that are listed, they base their product on population. The other one, I can't tell you what they base their quote on, so it's considerably larger. The quote that's in the middle is the one that I would prefer to go with. It is compatible with our financial software, whereas the other ones require a nightly export of their data and import to our financial data. So with the middle company being with the same software vendor as our financial provider software, I feel like that would be a simpler solution and be less staff time for us to process permits and payments. Happy to answer the questions. What was the difference? So originally, when they quoted this, I tried to get this figured out before I was off for my surgery, but the original difference was $200. And then when they, I said I needed a brief, a current quote to bring to you guys, they took off the installation price. So that's why the two look different. The annual cost difference is about $1,800. So that would be, that's the difference in annual cost if you were to.
Did you leave the paper that you gave us here?
Yeah.
So you want the MYGO?
That is the one I leave.
$11,330?
That is the cost for year one in installation.
And then the I work, how to say that? It's $6,700, so it's half the price?
That's what it is.
That's the one.
Yeah, they originally quoted it to me at $11,100, and then when I said I needed a current quote because I meant, I tried to get this on to you guys before the end of the year, and then their quote expired, and then I said I just need one that's current to bring to the council. Then they said, they thought I was asking for a better quote when I was actually asking for one that was current. So they went to their manager and said, can we do better? And they took off the cost of installation.
So can we take the quote, the middle quote? You know, it's much higher than the first quote?
It sounds like it's for additional services, it's not that complicated, correct?
Yeah, they, when they quoted, I'll say apples to apples, there was a $200 difference. And then they went back and sweetened the pot, if you will. I've never had anything like this before. Currently, we do not have this type of software. We are using Excel and trying to keep track of things that way. This is a, I'll see, committing software where there's a workflow. The violations also have a workflow. They have reminders for when inspections need to happen. There's also a public facing side so that people can report violations, schedule inspections, submit permits that way. So this is much more robust than we currently have.
And you've adjusted up for this?
We did ask for this in the budget.
I like it because it's basically the same, it ends up being the same software company that we already use for financials and utility billing. So it's going to just work seamlessly together.
And save time sometimes?
Yes.
It saves time instead of having, the other thing is, it would still enable the same folks who are collecting permit money to collect for permits because my department is so small that it'd be an internal controls issue for me to issue for it and collect the money for it.
I'd like to make a motion that we go ahead and purchase MYGO at $11,330 for the permit inspection code enforcement software.
All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, say no.
Thank you.
Is Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Oh, okay. SBA Disaster Recovery Loans Presentation.
Yes, thank you very much for having me. My name is Steven Park. I work for the U.S. Small Business Administration Office of Disaster Recovery and Resilience. There's been a federal disaster declaration for the severe storms and tornadoes taking place on March 19th in Bartholomew County and the contiguous counties. And because of that, SBA disaster loans are available for two different types of recovery. The first is our Physical Damage Disaster Loan Program. This is available for homeowners, renters, private nonprofits, and small businesses which have had physical damage from this event. Money can be used to rebuild, make repairs, or relocate. Funds are available for damage to personal property or to real estate for homeowners, business owners, or nonprofits. But if any of the groups had damaged personal property, whether it be maybe a motor vehicle, a tree limb fell on it, and they needed funds for insurance deductible or something like that, that'd be an example of a physical damage disaster loan that would be available from the SBA. The terms on these can be up to 30 years. The interest rates on the home loans could be as low as 2.75%. I've sent a lot more information by email about all of these details, and I don't want to take a bunch of your time here tonight. In addition to the Physical Damage Disaster Loan Program, we have Economic Injury Disaster Loans. These do not require any physical damage by a nonprofit or business to receive. These are for disruptions to their revenue caused by the severe weather event. So perhaps power is out, roads are blocked, customers couldn't get to a business, employees couldn't get to work, suppliers might have been impacted, and you couldn't get what you needed. These would be examples of the types of economic injuries which might induce a nonprofit or business to take this type of working capital loan. I'd like to highlight specifically for the Physical Damage Disaster Loans, the application deadline on those is June 23rd. We do not want anyone to miss it. And the Economic Injury Disaster Loan Application Deadline is much later, it's January 22nd, 2026. So the nonprofits and businesses have more time to figure out if they need something like that for the working capital loan. A few highlights about the loans. There is no application fee, there's no obligation to take a loan. Once you're approved, you have 60 days to decide if you want to take the loan. Then after that, essentially, you have another four months to decide if you pass up on the first to ask for the loan to be re-granted, if you really need more time to decide. And after the first disbursement, there is no accrued interest of required payments for the first 12 months. If you do have anyone who is having difficulty applying, that's currently the online, is the location to reply at lending.sba.gov. That's all the information I've sent along. Feel free to have anyone who needs information or help, give me a call or send me an email. I should be in Indiana for at least the rest of the spring, perhaps even the summer, working on some other disaster declarations as well, and I'll point people in the right direction. I will add that small businesses who are both applying for this type of loan and any other types of SBA loans, of course, have access to the free services of the Small Business Development Center. They have free business consultants who will help them with all kinds of things, whether someone wants to start a business or has an existing business and applying for disaster loans to be one of those things. There's a location in Columbus, which is the closest Edinburgh's location, I can point people to get help there. If they need more assistance, then I can provide them, applying for these disaster loans or getting me anything else done. But thank you very much, and thanks for hearing me out, and thank you for getting the information to the public. to the public.
Okay, other business. Rhonda? I think it's done.
Yep.
Sarah?
I just want to say that I please, Rock, thank you for everything you've done speaking.
Second back.
Anything?
I didn't know. Chief Level? Sure, there's every time, I've actually seen you again, but I haven't seen you in a couple of weeks, and I'm pretty happy with you. And they all, a couple of incidents, and I've got to say, especially after this, I need to do it. But it wasn't a quick response, and I haven't been able to speak yet. We've got there in two and a half minutes. We've got the starting order and the achievement, and we were there five minutes or less. And there was, so the part of our control double, which is maybe we have to do less reference. They launched a double from certain that, so you know, paramedics and people that they did, and I wanted to hold just, just amazing, amazing thinking. I'm happy to report that both are up. We see the ice cream in the hospital, and the other one who actually already helped up this weekend, which is amazing, and two of the doctors. So we're sure we're all of us competitive out there, and you can't, I think we'll probably say you do even better than them. You know, we're any better than them, but we just got a great response. Other than that, we've got a meaningful group lesson, so we're pretty happy about that.
Yeah?
I hear you, just in a minute. And always on that, thank you for this, and we hope that the other agencies and partners will be, will achieve, and it makes you really happy, and we stick on each other. I believe that, we do know each other now.
Good. Thank you, both. We appreciate it.
Is that it?
That's it.
Okay. Julie, you have anything else?
No.
Stan, you have it?
Phil? I sent a list of a few things in your package, because I wanted to, uh, just, I don't know, we're probably going to talk to Dustin about breaking the law. For irrigation with the Timbergate, so it's all these new houses, and we wait for each one to call us, and we're going after it five years now. So what we usually do is in April, we turn them on, and then people start getting their bills, and they start doing their thing. Then you have people calling, complaining, well, I need bills, why aren't I getting these? So I wanted to create an ordinance that says that irrigation gets turned on May 1st, and it gets shut off October 1st. If you get turned on and don't use it, bills will lie, stuff, you gotta pay the bills. This is, you know, how many houses we got out there? So it's just kind of hard to keep up with irrigation. So I wanted to see if we could get an ordinance created, she had permission to have him create an ordinance for irrigation for May 1st to October 1st.
For irrigation?
Yes.
Do you have any questions?
Make a motion for Dustin to create an ordinance for irrigation at Timbergate from May 1st to October 1st, is that what you said?
And remember, we said irrigation, but I wanted to say Timbergate, because that would have downtown law, so let's just say irrigation.
Irrigation overall.
Again, oh, give me a second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All in favor.
Most say no.
Most.
I tried that day.
That's okay.
The second one is Applewood residence. So we have two credit parks down. We have High Credit Park, which has two water meters, and Applewood has one, one water meter. And Applewood was sold by, I can't remember where it was, like, we chose it to a company that I don't even know where it's at, North Carolina maybe. Anyway, that company, we have one meter that beats the whole, the whole building, so we the whole credit park, and we can build that to the credit park and then. Now, they have called another company called Five Star Water Metering, and Five Star came in and did meters at every trailer. And then we've had residents try to come in and pay their bills, and then just start complaining because I'm sure they're getting nothing. So they're asking, is it legal for them to do that? I'm assuming it is, because we just did one bill, and the other one just pushed in the different meters. So I need, didn't know we'd get Dustin's permission, or get permission to just look into that on the legal aspect.
Do you have a question?
Uh, yes.
Well, Mike can do it. Mike, I'm saying, I'm trying to think. Make a motion for Dustin to look into the Applewood meter system to see if it's legal to have one or more.
I'm trying to figure out if it's legal.
I don't know. Come in to do that.
Second.
All in favor say aye. All opposed say no. Anything else?
If you recall, on first of March, on Sunday, we got a call, I don't know if it was Saturday, got a call from Water Park, or the Workman's Credit Park, or Workman's, whatever it is, I don't know. They'll retire on my three meter pits for the, for the park, for that Applewood, whatever you want to call it. And melted my meter pit. It busted, busted a water line, so I, the bill right now is $1,775, put call out, from where we were there, to dig it up, fix it, and get it back on when they have water. I haven't done any repairs to the meter pits, they're all melted and need replaced. And dealing with that guy of three, I don't have to say it, my fault. So the bill right now is $1,775 just for that call out. Now, we've got to have to spend probably another $2,500 to repair the meter pit before winter time. I'm now not doing anything because he's still burning stuff out there and doing all kinds of crap, like, but, so the house bill said, 1477, I wanted to give that copy of that to Dustin, but it's for both homes and main factory companies, both homes here and the main factory. I really don't know if it was Workman's Credit Park, when this was taken, but it's no longer a credit park, I'm worried I'm missing. So I'm assuming that doesn't matter. But I guess Dustin will look that and see. But I'm pretty sure I'm never going to get this money unless we do something. So I need to figure out the legal aspect of how we can shut that water off, to collect our money, and if it also is going to affect one person, or if he's telling, he's going to have a meter pit completely taken out, set off, and our people kind of ain't going to work. So we have to kind of, and we've got three people off to do that.
What's a meter pit?
It's where your water meters in. So at Workman's, or out there, there's, I have a meter pit, a meter pit, and a meter pit, two meters in this, and two in this, and two in this, and you've got to go to six different places. They destroyed that place and limited it down to three trailers, or two trailers in the house. Everything else has been torn down and scattered everywhere. You have to go out there and take a look next to it.
So people still live out there?
They live out there. Well, and he just started going brush on top of my meter pits, and it's burnt, started burning. Well, then, when he realized water was coming up, he took his back over, and he dragged the dirt, the fire off of it, had a call fire department come out, put the fire out. And if my water meter was shooting, the water blew off one of my meter stops, which is vibrating, going through the whole meter pit, about 40 feet near. We had to dig it up, service it, and just, and pinch it off so I could repair the service. My meter pits are all destroyed and melted, and they have big metal lids on them, they're 20-inch lids. So all that's got to be dug up, and I'm going to replace all of it, because it's all been melted and destroyed. And it's good right now if it's warm weather, and then when it starts getting cold, the water from the air is getting, and everything is ruined above. So I'm just trying to figure out where we're at, and I need some guidance somewhere to go.
You know what? Good news. You don't have to make a motion, because I'm already looking into it.
I have no idea. I'm sorry, is that one?
Yeah, I have a couple other things, but I'm going to work on that later, so don't worry about my past. Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
Dan?
A lot of work going on at the pool, we should see water flowing in there this week. My car's harder at it right now, actually. So good news, flowers are all coming into town. Just because in town, Wednesday, put them up downtown and everywhere else. It's going to be a little more colorful around. The league is going great. It's, it's fun, and this time, this time of year comes in, it's fun to hear all these kids out dining and other activities going on. That's great. Firecracker Festival, we're plugging away. We've got most everything lined up, so it's just a matter of, they get here for the most part, we're doing what we got to do, and here's what I've got to pack. Yeah, I think that's good enough.
Sure.
When's the poll open, Dan?
Mortal Living.
You don't have anything? Okay, Sarah Beth?
Uh, just a couple things. I did want to say that the group got back last week from Stan, Georgia, that went through the community center, and that's great, and they all had such a great time. And I think the new work address is already almost sold out, or maybe sold out already. So it's really great that we're able to offer that, and it was mostly out of town folks that, that were with us, so it was really nice. Last week on Friday, we had a group of downtown sleep holders together, and what came out of that meeting was that people really want to see a main street organization formed in town. And so we'll be meeting the fourth Wednesday of every month, from one to the community center. So I'll send that out if anyone would like to join us for that. And we're getting ahold of our OPA representative to help us get started on that process. It was very exciting, and all the downtowners that were there were really excited to be part of it. And then I just wanted to give a shout out to the Edinburgh Line Club. We picked up trash on Ice Tower for two hours that every morning, so go by and admire that. It was really nice out there. It's amazing what lines all the vehicles are, what people just dump out there. It's crazy.
Well, thank you for that.
Yeah.
That it?
That's it.
Okay, we will open it up to the public. If you have anything you'd like to say, say your name and address, please. And if there's no, no one who wants to speak, I make a motion to a jury.
A second?
Or I need a motion to a jury.
Make a motion to the jury.
All in favor say aye. All opposed say no. Thank you all, thank everyone for attending.